All of those are available online and can be found from the City Council, or excuse me, from the City of Aberdeen website.
On one of the maps, there are no addresses for the properties that we own?
If you're looking for additional information, I'm sure that we can work with you to get that list. At this point for this evening, to get general, we could do that. The list is available and you can reach my office. It's just getting in and out, it's just my imagination. Alright, thank you. But we're happy to provide the information. It is public information. We just didn't, I just didn't put it on the map because it's very detailed and I felt like it might confuse, but absolutely the information is available.
Okay. Thank you.
So, testing, how are these mics sounding?
That sounds good.
I was told today that last council meeting, it sounded pretty good.
It's kinda chumpy.
I think people need to talk into them and if you have a tendency to turn your head, you lose them.
They are very directional mics.
What bothers me right now is, they shouldn't do that, so...
Okay, it is 7:17 and I will call to order this workshop of the Aberdeen City Council. I see that we are, I don't know if we want to take a roll or just want to note who's not with us tonight. Okay, well, I would note that, let's take a roll because I'm on my feet right now.
Allstrom.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Gossby.
Here.
Brassy.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Hodgman.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mackey.
Absent.
Rogers.
Absent.
Ross.
Here.
Rowe.
Absent.
Shaw.
Here.
And Mayor Shane Biskin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, so it is a workshop and we can't take action, but I would note that I did hear from Councilwoman Rowe and she may or may not be able to join us tonight, but she'll tell us if she can.
She will not be able to. Sorry, I did hear from her.
So, with the council's indulgence, I wanted to take just a minute to follow up on the city attorney's comments about the maps and everything. And welcome everyone here tonight. And I know some of you are aware that this is a meeting where we don't necessarily take public comment. This is, we've been having hearing from the public for quite a while on this issue, so this is an opportunity for the council to share our thoughts amongst each other and for you to hear what the council is thinking now that we've had a lot of public comment over time. But we do want to hear or from you, and so what we've done is we put some comment cards on the table back there. And so if you have something you want to share with the council, if you would please write your comment down and if you want us to get back to you or you want it to be on the record, please put your contact, your name and contact information. And what I will do for the next council meeting is we'll compile all those cards and share your comments with the council as part of the record at our next meeting. So, that's just one way that we thought we wanted to, if you have any thoughts during our discussion tonight, you can share them with us that way. And the documents that have been given to the council are all on the table back there too, so as we discuss things, that's available. With that, I would like to move into our agenda. The first item on the agenda is an overview and a timeline. This is, the city attorney and I, the goal, I think our goal tonight is to catch up a little bit and bring, make sure, we have some decisions to make between now and in the near future about next steps for our shelter. And we just want, I think our goal is to make sure that everybody has the same information as we get ready to make some decisions on some next steps. And so with that in mind, our city attorney has put together a timeline and you'll see that the first item on there is two years ago, we had a workshop on January 31st to this very same issue. But she's going to hopefully hit some of the really important highlights for us, the things that as a council member, we need to know based on some court decisions and some other legal analysis. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney and ask her to take us through the timeline.
Thank you, Council President Shaw. So, I'm just gonna do a little, what I refer to as hockey highlights of the timeline and then move into legal context of where some of the decisions came in. As Council President Shaw said, January 31st, 2018, just shy of two years ago, there was the workshop on priorities which identified addressing homelessness as a priority for the city. We fast forwarded to May of that year where the City Council at that time authorized Mayor Larson to purchase what is colloquially known as where the River Camp was, the riverous property, for abatement purposes. That purchase was finalized in August of 2018. Interestingly enough, in September, I believe it was September 4th of 2018 was when the Martin v. Boise case came down. That case was the Ninth Circuit of U.S. Court of Appeals, which is the circuit that we are in. And that federal law guides how the state of Washington and cities in the state of Washington have to operate our systems. And in that case, the Ninth Circuit determined that it is unconstitutional for a city to criminally prosecute folks who are sleeping on the street because they have no alternative, or on public property because they have no alternative place to go. That gave us all an opportunity to reexamine our response to what our ordinances were about public camping and how we as a city, as did many in the Ninth Circuit, respond to that. We tried to move forward doing what we thought was right. We made some mistakes, so we have learned from those. As you are all aware, there was a federal lawsuit that was filed in November of 2018. During the course of that, there were some additional decisions that were made in 2018. City Council have, excuse me, City Council finally had an opportunity to really examine the public camping ordinance that we have. By public camping, I am talking about the camp, any restrictions or regulation on camping on public property. The last time that our ordinance had been updated was about 2006 or '11, I can't believe I don't know those differences. For the city council's background, that is Chapter 12.46 of the Aberdeen Municipal Code. Again, if anyone would like to look online, that code is available online with a link through the city website. We made, the changes that were made were that we had had criminal citations for camping on public property available. We changed that so that they are civil infractions and that public camping law also went through and identified, I believe five, off the top of my head, five different kind of classes of City of Aberdeen public property. And within those five classes, there was one class, a city property that is identified as if there is no available overnight shelter in that particular class of property, the police will not be enforcing our camping ordinance. It is that definition, sorry, is in, that portion of any street right-of-way that is not expressly reserved for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. That area, that description seems a little, perhaps overly legalistic, but basically what it is, and we had the opportunity to be more specific and clear during our second round of federal litigation, that what that means is the street right-of-way extends from the middle of the street to the building on the side. So clearly, the area in the trafficway is reserved expressly for vehicular traffic. Clearly, there are areas that are reserved for pedestrian traffic and that is guided by federal law, including the Americans with Disabilities Act, which requires at least a 48-inch clearance or clear pathway through. So, our engineering staff were extraordinarily helpful in identifying, at least in the downtown area, those areas that are, where public sleeping, are not sleeping or be available. This then interacts with our sit-down ordinance. Our sit-down ordinance was passed in, earlier in 2018, so prior to the Martin v. Boise decision. And there are restrictions that are placed on people sitting or lying down in the downtown area. So in that area, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., people are not allowed to sit on the sidewalk or to sleep on the sidewalk, but between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. they are. So it is, and you can look at the findings on what that area is. On the map that has been handed out to you, the one that has the multicolored stripes in the downtown area, for those of you who like to look, it's on the very same map, just a larger version, more people can gather around it. On the, on the map, the area that is outlined in yellow is what we were calling the alternative locations, and those are basically the particularly wide area of the sidewalks that are, that meet the definition that are public camping ordinance. This mapped out area is, was restricted for some reasons. Other criteria, if you'd like, we can talk about later. There is also outlined in pink, the sit-down boundaries. So you can see there's quite a bit of overlap, particularly in the focused downtown area of that. But there are roughly 175,000 square feet that are mapped in yellow. When you take out the sit-down boundaries, then there are about 45,000 square feet that are not subject to the sit-down restrictions. I also really am frustrated when people say "on the lot," so I do apologize for that. So, when our sit-down ordinance was established again in May of 2018, it's a civil infraction if folks are down there and folks who are sitting or lying on the sidewalk without specific exceptions being followed, like they have a permit from the city or it is a medical emergency that they need to sit down, these sorts of things happen. Police are required to provide a verbal warning before any civil infraction can be offered. So, that is the legal and dry background providing a context for where we are right now. That President said.
Thank you. So, I would open it up to any questions from the council on our current ordinances?
Can it be made clear that if, what the circum, did you just say, answer this, the circumstances, if a tent is placed on one of these designated areas on the sidewalks, it can only be there between certain hours?
It depends on where, this is a perfect lawyer answer, that depends. It depends on what part of the city of the yellow marked area. If it is within the sit-down ordinance area, then, and in any case, there needs to always be at least a four-foot wide path of travel under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So if it's, if there's, if there's a wide enough space and there's a tent placed and it is not in the pink area, then that is accessible 24 hours a day. If it is in the yellow area but also, and, but also in the pink area and it maintains the passage area, then that is under current city law restricted to the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. So, and again, in that instance, the police will provide a verbal warning before civil infractions is issued.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Oscar.
Well, just for that last comment, it sounded like an answer to the sit-down ordinance, but really talked about the public camping ordinance.
So, what I heard, the question was, are there, are there specific hours? And there are specific hours if the area that things are put on is in a sit-down ordinance area. So within the core downtown area, which is in pink. If it is not the double pink area, then those hour restrictions are not applicable, so long as there is no available overnight shelter.
But that just applies to the sit-down ordinance, not the camping ordinance?
No. In our camping ordinance, the camping ordinance says if there is no available overnight shelter, then the, then the area located is, is available for camping. Does that sound clear as much now?
But again, there's no hour restrictions on that.
Correct, so long as it is not within the sit-down area, that is correct. Any other questions?
So, the next on the agenda, I asked them if they would share some of their insights, both from experience having the Riverside Camp and the Tassel and what, just share their expertise and things that they would, might like us to keep in mind as we go forward. And it looks like Chief Shuay is prepared to go first.
Lowdown on the whole, Chief Public said I had to go first, so here I come.
Good job, Chief.
Anyway, I'll, the deputy chief is passing out. It's just one graph. I will be talking about the statistics of that graph here shortly, and then there'll be a few extra copies that are included in the map if you have the desire to take a look at that. So, again, Chief Shuay, Aberdeen Police, I was asked to cover some of public safety considerations as it relates to the Aberdeen Police Department, and I thought it would be prudent, President Shawland gave me five minutes unless it was ready, so I'm hoping it's ready, I may give you a few more minutes past that, so. Anyway, so I want to give a overview of public safety for the city as a whole, particularly for the new council members. The Aberdeen Police Department continues to be the busiest agency in the county. From 2008 Annual Police Report, and we are currently working on our 2019, we handle just over 33,000 calls for service. Those calls ultimately resulted in 2,421 citations and were approximately issued. In addition to that, we had 749 total felony cases investigated. Of those, 358 were submitted to the Great Service County Prosecutor's Office and 220 of those were, we say, sent back down to the Aberdeen Municipal Court for misnamed charges. And then in 2019, from January through the end of November, and that's what the graph that you have will illustrate, to give you some comparisons with the whole police department and the Olympia Police Department. And as you will look to the graph here, on the left side of the graph in particular, you'll see the 2019 non-traffic. Those typically are covering your trespass, your theft complaints, the shoplifting complaints, misdemeanor, non-traffic offenses. And as you can see there, we have a total of 1,400, excuse me, we were, total for the year, we were at 1,492, but as you can see there, we had three times as many of those cases as the whole police department. And unfortunately, that then affects the ability for us to do self-initiated traffic, and so that's why you see the stat there for traffic is pretty even with the other jurisdictions. But it's just noteworthy, if you look to the far right, how many more even compare us to the Olympia Police Department, unfortunately, than we had to deal with. The majority, and I may mention this before, the majority of property crimes that are being committed is fueled by a recidivism. It is a focus for us with our PROACT team to get that to a permanent status. We've been able to utilize our PROACT team of recent sporadically with staffing levels allowed. Maybe you may remember, I think it was last week, we had that armed felon with a gun and a knife who we arrested at the brief scuffle. They subsequently were able to execute a search warrant on the vehicle, found drugs and indications that he was selling drugs. That was done by the PROACT team. If we didn't have the PROACT team, they would probably be going from call to call. A lot of the activity that APD deals with, unfortunately, does involve our transient homeless population. And with respect to the former River Camp property, and just to give you an idea of the call line for, and it will be the same timeframe, basically a six-month period for River Camp, from August 1st, 2018 to January 27th, 2019, so just shy of six months, we responded 146 times to the River Camp. However, these calls generated are much different than the calls that are generated from Tassel. A lot of the calls from the River Camp were self-initiated by the Aberdeen Police Department. We had, we responded out there for contacts, we responded out there to follow up on crimes. A lot of the Safeway thefts, the individuals would then flee to the River Camp and we would respond out there to try to solve those. We responded back to Aberdeen Fire Department, responded to medical events and overdoses, and assisted various social agencies. As you can imagine, most of the CPS referrals, the Adult Protective Services, the SHS, they didn't feel comfortable going out there, so we got a lot of agency assist, would assist them going out to the River Camp. And then we did, occasionally did call from individuals who stayed on the River Camp, but those were typically fairly substantial criminal cases, which ranged from fairly significant fights, sexual assault, stabbing, shots fired, et cetera. Now, compared that same timeframe with Tassel, let, of course, a year later, so August 1st of 2019 through August, or January 27th of 2020, we had responded to Tassel a total of 290 times, so we were just, just over twice as many responses. I will tell you though, that the calls to Tassel are mainly generated by the security and trying to maintain order there. So, one of the inquiries from the President was to come up with pros and cons as it relates to Tassel. And so, the pros, as it relates to Tassel and public safety, I would say the pros. A well-managed and sanctioned location for a homeless community would provide a safe environment where no other alternative exists. Theoretically, this would mitigate the number of individuals on the streets. Number two, having a designated location for our homeless community would or should make it easier for various social services to access clients. I believe it's within a week, they're supposed to enter, coordinated entry. These services are the steps forward addressing the challenges that individuals may have with the hope of getting back on track. Number three, having a designated location would mitigate the number of unsanctioned encampments we have in the city. Currently, there are several that the Aberdeen Police Department deals with on a continuous basis. You know, on the south side, there's a number of locations, some of the larger spots are the site on Hillside, the Port of Great Harbor has a property that we often deal with individuals there. We have the Terrace Avenue area, Randall Street, Maple and First, Bymark near the railroad tracks, F, and River Streets, the Shavas River Bridge near F Street. So, my line staff deals with this on a daily basis. Number four, Tassel certainly involves a high-needs population, individuals with mental type of challenges, drug addiction, alcohol addiction, or a combination of the three. The calls to Tassel obviously reflect a high-needs population. Having a designated location allows law enforcement to deal with their various challenges at one location. And I would say number five, it would be a pro. It's certainly a quick response for us. The deputy chief and I often respond there and be there within a minute or two because it's out our back door. The cons, as I see with, with Tassel, in its current location, it has had negative impact on the city hall business. Citizens have expressed concern to go to the city hall when some of the transient activity outside Tassel has had a negative impact on some of the employees. We had some challenges when we had some of the tents set up there in front of the fountain, some individuals would have a tendency to want to play music. It affected the finance department, H R, if you're on occasion, and we would respond over and try to deal with that. That was, I see number two, has had a negative impact on the surrounding area. We have experienced a variety of crimes that occurred inside as well as in the immediate area. The calls to Tassel reflect that. Number three, the legal drug activity has been problematic. We have arrested a number of individuals for illegal drug activity, however, it continues to be a challenge. Just this week, the PROACT team executed a search warrant on one of the tents for criminal activity and arrested a female, Tassel victim for various charges. Number four, Tassel in this current location has created more challenges with the pedestrians and the oldering public. And number five, too many people within a small footprint. Tents being so close presents a challenge, not only for the fire department, the police department as well. Recent search warrants that I may mention, we had to amend it because they had two tents that they zipped together, and unfortunately, when you're in that tent, there is an expectation of privacy. We can't have the police just go in there just because, we either have to get permission or we have to request a warrant from the judge. So certainly, those are some of the cons as it relates to public safety in the Aberdeen Police Department. And then if I may, I just wanted to share some general concerns I have. The Aberdeen Police Department, I feel, has worked hard to try to mitigate the challenges associated with this population for our residential and business communities. I certainly have concerns of where this high-needs population would go if we did not have a designated location. While I would expect an increase in our unsanctioned encampments, my concern if we had no designated location is the potential negative impact to our businesses and our residential areas. I have concerns of a designated location being established in or near a populated residential area or near our downtown businesses. With that, I also have a concern that a location being established that is a substantial distance away from a fire or the law response. Enforce, as the corporate counsel may mention, enforcing our city ordinance, it, as it relates to camping, that has been a challenge. The violations are only civil penalties associated with it. Given Martin v. Boise, we are limited on what we're able to do. Tassel was created, however, no additional city staff was hired to manage it. We relied on current staff to do that. Concerns were raised early on regarding the variety of challenges associated with the management of Tassel. That took several months before we were able to get proper policies in place and started to more fully enforce the rules. If a longer-term Tassel is created, visitation could be restricted from the location of the tents. Visitors have presented themselves with challenges for security and enforcement of the rules since Tassel was created. The change in the time restrictions placed on visitors has helped. And then by that, concerns of increasing the number of individuals in Tassel. Olympia recommended that we keep that number of participants at 80, no more than 100, but the recommendations factor in a city of Olympia that has a department that is dedicated to their homeless response program. Unfortunately, the city of Aberdeen does not. So hopefully, Council President Shawland hit on that. Things that you wanted me to do, so with that, I'm certainly open to questions.
Well, I personally found that riveting.
I, that was my hope.
Any questions for the chief?
How far away would you want the camp if we were to move in? If you, if you could pick, even if it's not city property, where, if you could go like this, where would you go?
If, I think that'd be a wealthy amendment. Do you where that exact place would be? I, it's, as I shared, we responded 290 times on August 1st until two days ago. And so, we know we have a high-needs population, we know we are going to respond there, and so it's, I don't think, that's a good question. I'm not sure, I have an answer for that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll turn that, oh, voice for president?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Council, proportion council again. And actually, I add this on, the misdemeanor criminal case load report that you provided, I don't know where you got your information, but I do know that it is available to the public generally on the Court, Washington State Courts website, which is at courts.wa.gov. And on the left-hand side, specific to Aberdeen Municipal Court, it is a court of limited jurisdiction. So if you're going again to courts.wa.gov on the left-hand side, specific to the city of Aberdeen, it's a court of limited jurisdiction.
And thank you. And actually, Aberdeen Municipal Court Judge Susan Solman provided this thing.
If there's nothing else, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put on my temporary fire hat.
Fire and police cooperation.
Where more appreciates, but I guess we do it. I might get right in the fire.
You want?
Yo, I'm looking to do one. Oh, it's wetter.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Didn't get one?
Yeah.
Good evening. Tom Hubbard, car chief, Aberdeen Fire Department. So I'm gonna start with the graph. It's a very simple graph that I pictured worth a thousand words. So it took 179 day periods from July 16th, let me back that up, July 16th, 2018 to December 26th, 2018. That is to represent River Camp. The months are July through December. And then I did the next 179 days for Tassel. The first page, we'll see on colors for J. Our EMS calls, the blue being Tassel, the green being River Camp. As you can see, there has not been a significant change. There's actually a few more calls at Tassel. I look at that as a positive. It means people are getting access to care. Somebody may, the security has a telephone. If they see there's an issue and people may feel safer to call because their belongings will remain safe if they have to be transported. So that's a good thing for the occupants. For us as responders, it's much safer for us to go to Tassel. River Camp for those that had been down there, unsanctioned, very dangerous. For occupants, very dangerous. Uneven terrain. Lots of places where you could slip, trip, and fall. Lots of things, propane tanks, open pits of fire, chemicals, this and that. So for us, it is much safer. EMS call volume, it's about the same. The next page is fires. Same time period. Yellow is River Camp, red is Tassel. This for me is the big win for the fire department and more importantly, for the occupants. We were going to a lot of fire calls at River Camp. Campfires that got out of control, propane tanks that had exploded. Some of the large structures, if you recall, looking down there, it looked like a fully involved house fire because some of these structures were very large. There were lots of blue tarps and structures very elaborately built, nothing to do with fire codes. Very dangerous. And when they burned, they burned rapidly. There were lots of explosions, there was exposures, there were people burned. And so by moving them off the River Camp to Tassel, we have almost eliminated the fire threat. It is still one of my greatest fears. We have had one fire at Tassel. That was because someone was not following the rules. That is why it is a strict policy, no fires at Tassel. There's not the ability to do anything like that. That's why we were very supportive of CAP putting in the warming shelter because we realized when it gets cold, that is a very difficult place to be, but we can't have open flames down at Tassel. Question so far? Okay. We talked about the camps or the graphs. So I'm gonna go through some of my pros and cons. I've kind of touched on a little bit. The River Camp was unsanctioned. And as Chief Schumay said, there's others around town that we've been to. We were up on Greenway last night. Those pose a danger obviously to the occupants. It's unsanctioned, it's unregulated, it's unsafe. And we're getting into the time of year when they're having fires and we're worried about propane tanks and all those things. Anything we can do such as Tassel helps eliminate that and make it safer for the occupants. River Camp was what we determined to be an extreme public health hazard for the occupants and the responders. And that was one of the primary driving forces to do the Tassel, to help eliminate that. Tassel has rules in place. The rules are there to increase the safety of the occupants. That is the whole design behind them. Sometimes they're difficult to enforce, but truly that is what we're trying to do. Improve health and safety. I believe it's increased the safety of the occupants greatly. It's given the occupants better access to social services, as Chief Schumay alluded to. CAP and CAP of Community Services and PHR and all those organizations have better access to their clients and vice versa. That's a positive. If Tassel did not exist, in my opinion, and I tried to mine my data and I couldn't do it, but anecdotally, I believe that prior to Tassel and when River Camp was in full existence, I noticed an increase in fires in vacant structures. The flagship for that was Dan's Gem of Dean. Those that remember that across, for two years, we were going there at least once a month for a fairly good working fire. And even with part of the structure burned out, people were living in it. On the last fire, we had to physically remove a gentleman in a wheelchair who still didn't want us to pull him out because that was home. But fires in vacant structures are extremely dangerous. They're dangerous for the occupants, they're dangerous for firefighters. Typically, these fires get well involved because there's no one there to say, hey, my house is on fire. And so we are arriving to a working structure fire. Our lives are at risk. So we have to put our lives at risk willingly to do this. But it's always a bad thing when there's vacant structure fires. My belief is if Tassel is shut down, we will see a spike in that. And that is really about it. Questions?
Questions, anyone? Well, thank you very much. So if you can put up with me for a minute, I'm gonna speak to the, the next ad on agenda, which is public health and welfare considerations. And I'll ask Lisa Scott to tag team me if I, if I leave anything out. But he was, isn't with us tonight, but Public Works Director Rick Sander. When I first got on the council, I was appointed to the Public Works Committee. And, uh, four years ago. And one of the things that's hard to share now that it's not happening is our downtown was in, in turmoil. Our downtown businesses were, they were distraught at what, what was happening in their downtown. And Rick Sander had a front row seat to all of the requests and the demands and the frustration from our business community at, and this is kind of hard to relate, but at the, there was no, there were no public facilities. And we, the Public Works routinely was going downtown several times a week, sometimes a couple of times a day to clean up human waste and, and urine and the complaints. This, as full as this room has been at times about the Tassel, it was as full or more from our business community. But just not able to, it was, it was horrible. So tonight I talked, I had a chance to talk to, to Rick and I asked him if things have changed since we opened the Tassel. And he said, when, when River Camp was operating, they kept three to four semi-camps downtown. That was the only thing they could think to do in response to the issue of, of the sanitation issue. And that was not a good answer either. And they, and there was, but that's what, that's what they did. And I got as much grief for that being the answer as, as doing nothing. He was, he said it was horrible to him. There was nothing we could do because there was nowhere else for, for this, this population to go. He goes, since the Tassel opened, we have since picked up the semi-camps. And he can't say there have been zero calls, but he himself, and I had a front row seat to him getting harangued. He would go to a couple meetings with me, with our business community. And it, it was, it was really hard. But anyway, he said he hasn't taken a call about human waste or the smell of urine on sidewalks in downtown in over three months. And that alone to him is, is a slam dunk for keeping a shelter somewhere. Otherwise, it, it's his belief that it will, it will all migrate back to the downtown. And he, I don't, unless we have another solution. So I, you know, our challenge tonight is, you know, to, to not go backwards, I guess is what I'm saying. And I don't know what the answer is going forward and that's our challenge. But he would, he also would say no camp, no shelter is, is gonna be a challenge for his department. And it wasn't a very pleasant one. So I share that from him. And the next thing I want to thought before we go into next steps or council comment period, I wanted, did anybody have any questions for me on that?
We, we skipped over operations budget.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Why didn't you go, do you have, do you have? So that, now I will, I am gonna turn to, to Lisa and ask her to add anything else on the public health and welfare considerations and the code enforcement part, but also to take us through the operations budget that she was so kind to prepare for us. Thank you. Um, as far as operations of Tassel, we do, excuse me, we see numerous complaints from rules not being enforced. And it has, I can't, I have to be honest, it's been a struggle. It's been a struggle for staff. It's usually no one I that are down there responding to the best of our ability. Um, you know, on top of our job. So it's, it has been a challenge. We do believe that actually over the last month, we've got a better control over what's going on. We have procedures that Corporation Council helped to develop that, that has really helped us to start really cracking down on enforcing the rules. So for those of you that aren't aware, typically what happens is depending upon the violation in and of itself, of which all of the Tassel members have to sign. Um, we, we give a verbal warning, a written warning, a second written warning, and then there's a third written warning. That's when we do an expulsion letter. So the, the Tassel members will be expelled from the site. And they are eligible to file an appeal. The appeal needs to come within seven days of the expulsion notice. And then a hearing with the mayor to review that appeal is held. And then the mayor enters a decision of whether or not the appeal is upheld or denied. So that's kind of the process on how we follow the rules. There's a lot that we struggle with because we're not here 24/7. So we do rely a lot on the security to report things. If someone is bringing drugs or alcohol into the camp, that's in a backpack. We don't know that, we don't search, we're not allowed to search them. So there are, I can't say it's perfect. There are things that do get in, but we do work with our police department and we do try to follow up when we find those violations. So we're, I think we're doing a heck of a lot better than we have in the past. And so we'll continue that moving forward. As of today, we are at 70 occupants in Tassel. That changes on a daily basis. We have people that come in, that leave and go other places. We have people that go into treatment. We have people that get jobs and get housing through CAP, which is another requirement that they, all Tassel members have to be enrolled in the coordinated entry through Coastal Community Action Program. And so those numbers can change on a daily basis. But right now, as of today, we're at 70, 70 individuals at Tassel. As far as the budget, you have a copy of Tassel expenses through January 2020 as well as what was approved by council to take us through March 15th of 2020. Um, yes, it is a significant amount of money. The majority of the expenses obviously are in security. So that is really important to us. We have, since the numbers at Tassel are at 70, we did include a second security guard. So there are always two people on site so that one can be doing, walking around and one can be there monitoring, yeah, visitors that come and go and as well as the Tassel members. So that's in a nutshell. And if you have any questions? Council, can you?
Um, where are we at with getting a camp manager? I know last workshop you were discussing that you were still kind of developing what the requirements of a manager would be.
You did, we did that. We went out for, for advertisement and no one applied for the job. I think part of that was the lateness in getting the job application together. And it's a kind of a, one of those moving targets where not, you know, this is new for us, learning what those duties and responsibilities are. And then at that point in the jump, sure, it was after January and it was, we'd only be for two months and 15 days. So that's when we met with security to see if we can add an additional security guard that would take the place of the day, day, day camp host and Tassel host coordinator. And so that's what we did to answer that since we didn't get, didn't get an applicant in and had to apply for that. We anticipate that it, it would maybe be longer than two months. If you were looking to fill a position for, as a contract for a year, it'd be a little easier. But again, nobody applied. So we worked with the security company to add that second guard so that we can go. Council, can you?
All right, so I have a few questions. So how many sites do we currently have? We have 70 occupants, but how many sites, how many tents?
Um, 86.
Okay, so we have 16 unoccupied tents at this moment?
Unoccupied, but they're, the, the issue that we run into is when we, when somebody is removed, we have to go in and a code enforcement officer goes down and puts personal, you know, has to go through the belongings to determine what is refused from what is personal property. We, we log all that in and take it to the storage container and store it for up to 60 days. And then dispose of the rest. And so we have, we only have certain days where we have staff to do that. So we have a backlog of some tents that we need to. So even though they may be, nobody in them, there's still some stuff in some of them.
So with the new tents, we, we went up to 86 single occupied units?
Yes.
Okay, so when the police chief mentioned his warrant, he mentioned that a tent had been zipped together.
Yes.
Uh, so we have double occupancy tents that are happening?
Uh, there were some that were allowed in the beginning that that's what had happened. And we are some correcting that. So that I think is the last one. There might be one more that we're working to, yeah.
Okay, just like, yeah, I thought we weren't doing that. So, um, let's see. So at this time, we have 86. And we, are we planning on closing any or are we gonna reopen this?
Yeah, we happen to have a hot committee on the 5th and I think we were gonna talk about that. But right now, at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to, once the tents are cleaned out, we're going to take them down, dry them out, clean them and store them. We'll have one tent that is up. So if there's somebody that, you know, transitions into the, comes to the camp or the police department, has somebody that they want to locate, we'll have one available. And then if we get anybody that's looking for a site, then 24 hours reasonably, obviously on Friday, it'll be till Monday. And we will get a tent back up. But we're going to take them down.
And who's, who's responsible right now for making sure? Cause there's an awful lot of debris in the, in the, in the camp. And I was just wondering, who's maintaining or responsible?
Actually, it's, oddly enough, as of Monday, it was pretty good. Tuesday was, I don't know what happened. It got pretty bad. Today it's cleaning up again. It is, we're down there daily. It's a struggle. We had appeal hearing today where we talked to seven individuals. Uh, so about the garbage and debris. So we are following. and debris, so we are following up and we're working on that. I think the last counseling question was brought up from the public about bicycles. That gentleman was expelled from camp. We honestly, removing the rest of bicycles wasn't the highest of our priorities. We will be doing that. The weather's been really nasty, and we're struggling to keep the tents clean, getting the tents cleaned out, so that is on our list, and we will be doing that. It's just, you know, it's going to take some time. We don't have a lot of staff dedicated to this, so when we have available time, we do go down and try to clean out as much as we can.
Right. Right, that was all my questions. So I would just ask a clarifying question. When you say that we had seven appeals, that means there were seven people not following the rules who were expelled, who are now appealing to be allowed to come back?
That's correct.
It's part of the trying to impress upon people the litter control?
Yeah, there was more than litter control, but yeah, whether it was multitude of different violations, we have the, whenever we issue a violation, there's three, and there's a, there's sets of contents depending upon what it is. Some things are immediate removal from Tassel, and others are not. So we're following our process to do that, and, you know, it takes some time.
Any other questions? Counselor Cannon?
What happens when someone's expelled from the Tassel?
So they collect their belongings and...
How about, well, I mean, like after that, what legally do they, they just move into the where they work to, or?
That is a really interesting question, and at this point, we hope that they can find somewhere else to go. If we know of anything, we send them in that direction. We do our best to, if we have that information, to provide it to them. There's a couple places right now where people can go, and we hope that they can get in there. But outside of that, I can't, I don't think I have an answer unless...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So on this topic, and Lisa, if you would also add in, if you would, I would just share with the council that last Tuesday, some members of the ad hoc committee and corporate council, and Lisa, we went to the workshop meeting of the county commissioners and laid out our costs and tried to get some guidance from them on how we might be able to access some of the grant funds that the county receives for dealing with the homeless and unsheltered. And we're still kind of working through that, but we asked them to be a 50% partner with us in this, as we have no, our message was, we have nowhere else to go. Only the county and CAP receive state grant funds, are eligible to receive state grant funds to deal with the, with homeless and unsheltered. And right now, the county has a goal of establishing a low barrier shelter, but no plan or activity dealing with the unsheltered. We're doing it, and we're looking to partner with them, and I'll try and keep you updated as I get more information. I'm hoping that we can just roll up our sleeves and we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and the county can help us figure out how to put something together that meets, that is eligible. Because, but we'll see, we'll see where that goes. And Dave, I have any questions on that?
I was just going to ask a question from before. Do you know approximately how many people have been expelled?
I don't know that off the top of my head. It's double digits. I don't know past records.
So there were seven appeals here, and I believe there were three other appeals, so there were at least 10 people who went through the appeals process, but not everyone who was expelled has gone through the appeal process?
That's correct. They have within seven days to file an appeal, so if they don't, then they've lost their chance to file an appeal.
Okay. And then since inception, how many unique individuals have we served at Tassel, the council committee?
Good question. That's a really good question.
What was the question?
How many unique individuals have we served at Tassel, when this created?
I need to have to, you know what, we'll have, I have to go back and count, and I can't give you that number. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's a lot. We've had some great success stories. We've had some not so good stories. So depending upon how you look at it, there are at least 12 people that I know of that have gone on to treatment. There are several that have gotten, and some even in Tassel are working, and there are CAPs waiting for housing. So, you know, you've got a big mixture, but I'm happy to report there are lots of success stories to go with that, so. But I'll give you that number, I'll make a note of that, just to let you know how many people have come in and out.
Anyone else?
Certainly, if the Tassel is moved, your job of intervening and helping is going to be more difficult.
No, I think that if, when we talked about a longer term solution, a longer, shorter term solution, the thought is, is to hire a camp host. And so outside of that, I think when it comes to the, to removing people from Tassel, I think that our department would still participate with police to do that when necessary, but other than that, we would, the camp host would be picking that up from us. So we wouldn't be down there, we wouldn't need to be down there on a daily basis. And also, since we've been a lot more structured with the rules, we are getting good results from that, and Tassel members are really seeing that, yeah, we need to get our stuff together, we need to comply. So we're starting to see more of that, and I have a feeling that it's only going to get, going to get better. It's not going to be perfect, but it'll get better. But so no, I, if we do move to another location for a longer, a longer term, I don't, I see our part maybe dropping off more.
Thank you for doing everything you've done. I know you've, you've picked up a lot of headaches that nobody else wanted, so.
You know, it's okay. It's disturbing indeed, so thank you.
And what else for our community development director? Okay?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was, I thought the council would like to hear from the mayor as part of our trying to have an umbrella point of view on what's that, so I would like to turn it over to Marsha for a few minutes.
Well, first of all, I'd like to give my thanks to the police chief, and the deputy police chief, the fire chief, code enforcement officer, economic development, HR, and parks department for being here tonight, because every one of these departments are affected every single day with the camp. And they do a lot, and it takes away time that they're, would be working for the regular department things that they do. I'd also like to acknowledge April Obi for being here, because she's also been a great help in the camp. She's a good advocate for the folks down there, and she's been helping pretty much on a regular basis in some form or another, so that's all been real, real good. I think since the first of the year, we've, in my experience, if I got the numbers correct, I think it's been seven campers removed from the camp out of the 12 or sold out of filed appeals. I think since the first, and that's just since the first of the year, so I can't speak to any of that before that. A question comes up again today. What is, what is my feelings on the camp? And I've made, mentioned this before. My personal feelings is I'm not in favor of the camp at all. If it was, if the choice was personally mine today, I'd close the camp. But it's not, and it's a, it's a team project. The council has to make those decisions, and I'm not a dictator, so. And the other thing, part of that is, I've been silent quite a bit because I'm not going to throw out negatives and those types of comments. I'm working with the team to try to solve the issues, so. And I will say that there's, processes are in place, and they're getting better every day for the management of the camp. The fences are being addressed, the tarps on the fences are being addressed. They're preparing to remove a lot of the trash that's in there in the bicycles parts as What else? Oh, we just put a gate in. I don't know if we mentioned that, which has helped a lot as far as keeping track of everybody coming in and out of there, so. I guess that's all.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So in terms of envisioning what Aberdeen looks like without a Tassel, what do you think happens if we disband it? How do we, how do we manage it?
My feeling is that without the Tassel and without the needle exchange in Aberdeen, at least a third of this group would move on. Maybe more, maybe less, it's hard to say, but that's my feeling, so.
Okay, any other questions? Councilwoman Ross. So what happens to the other two thirds?
It would be just like, pretty much like it's always been, they would find locations, and I think the numbers would dwindle as time went on, because they wouldn't, I can't imagine camping on the yellow zones on the sidewalk as being very inviting, and I think they'll move on. But again, I'm not dictating any of this. I'm working as a team member with this group, and we're going to find a solution. And I believe that, I believe we have a council that cares and staff that cares, and we're going to find a solution, so.
So if the Tassel was to be closed, would the police be able to do their job? I have people coming to me every day asking, asking the questions over and over again. Why do we have, why do we have people drinking on sidewalks? Why, you know, all the problems that we've had. We need to untie the police's hands. Yes, 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 yes.
I think whether the camp is here or the camp is not here, the police are limited in what they can do on this, mainly, partly by the night circuit court rule. Every one of these folks have rights, and so the only difference would be, the police would be moving around the city a lot more than they are with just camp, obviously.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next, actually, what I'd like to do is move next steps above council comment period, because when we go around and share our thoughts, the point of having the council comment period was so that our staff and each of us kind of, we can't vote on anything tonight, but we can share our thoughts, and maybe a picture will emerge on what staff could come back to us with that has a chance of passing, or a way that we can find some, you know, something, a direction that we're interested in pursuing, and maybe take something off the table. Okay, that's not getting any interest tonight. So as I was thinking about things we have, it's kind of a two-point question. One, do we need a shelter or not? And if so, if we decide that that's so, then it would be, where does it go? So our options, I see three. We can do nothing, which, we do have that option. It expires in the middle of March, and we can disband the shelter and talk about what Aberdeen looks like if we do that. We can extend this, the city hall site, as I understand it from talking with community development and Corporation Council, we have the option of extending the city hall site until July, if we think we need more time to. But then, then we're done at that site, because under our current ordinances, we can only have a temporary use permit for a year, and our year will be up in July. If we decide to extend it to July and the year is up, then, then one of our other thoughts is find an alternative site. Either one is aware that we got that far one point earlier, and then the, when it came right down to it, we, here we are, we've not decided to actually move again. So if we decide we want to, we need to identify a site and direct staff on the next steps. So those are, those are things, as we open it up and go around, I just was hoping that people would share their thoughts with those, that in mind, so that when we have a conversation on this again, we're, this not back to square one, that we've actually kind of started to think about, what are we really going to do? So if it's okay, I'd like to just start down there in word one, and with Councilwoman Andrews, and maybe just all of us listen to each other.
So, I mean, quite frankly, if I had my choice, I wouldn't have the site either. But unfortunately, given our day and age in the ninth district that we live in, we don't have much trust. One of my, I voted no for a lot, and my biggest thing was money. I think that, I still think that the county needs to step up. They get the money, we don't. And if they're not willing to help us, then we need to take our money back. I'm still in that belief. As far as, I don't believe, I believe we should move the site. I believe we should move it to Michigan, even though it's not very popular. But it's not going to be popular no matter where we put it. No matter where we put it, we're going to make somebody mad. We're going to make a neighbor upset. There's not one piece of property in this entire city that doesn't have something or somebody next to it. And my only concern with that property primarily is the railroad truck, but I think we can protect against that. But, you know, because it's on this side versus the other side. But I really don't think we can, we can not do it. I think we have to do something. I don't want, if we close the site, I really believe we're going to end up with another River City someplace house. And it's not fair to private property owners to be taken over again, and it's just, it's just not fair. With that aside, then.
Thank you. First off, I think the city of Aberdeen owns far too many properties. I would like to see if we were to continue. I do not like the Michigan Street property. I've seen documentation from the railroad that they're not going to like it. I think we're going to have a fight on our hands with railroad. I don't think it's going to work. I think it would behoove us to sell some of the properties that we have in order to finance, to look at a whole new property, and in order to finance, sell some of the properties that we've got, get those back on the tax rolls, so we've got some money coming in. $260,000. I don't know, is that a lot of money to anybody else? How much we're spending in a year on keeping people in a bunch of tents? That, that just seems like an awful lot of money to me. If I personally was to run a shelter, I would have a great big FEMA tent with a bunch of cots laid out. When you make, when you make a community of... When you make, when you make a community of drug and alcohol-dependent folks more comfortable, we unfortunately make them more unhealthy. There's things that, that we can do to help them, and we're not doing that right now. Our community is making this subsection of our community less healthy. I'm with the mayor on the needle exchange. I think, I don't think the van needs to be in town. I think that van needs to go to East County and service any folks out of town. It brings all of the drug addicts from the entire county to our city twice a week. That's eight times a month. We have all of the drug addicts from the entire county coming here. If we can at least eliminate the one under the bridge and send that out to East County, that's going to eliminate some of the folks that are coming here that are causing problems. We have a long ways to go, and I, I don't know what all the answers are. I don't think Michigan Street is it. I think we need to look at a whole new property. I don't know how we get it, how we stay in the city limits and get it away from everybody's homes. I don't know how that's gonna happen. I don't know how we're gonna keep it away from all the businesses. I don't have all the answers, but I, I don't like leaning towards Michigan, and I definitely don't like the amount of money we're spending on this. Thank you.
Really hot subject. So, first, there, there is no perfect place. If there was a perfect place, we would not have a homeless population at all. This is a nationwide issue. This is not just something our city is experiencing. There are a lot of other people talking about solutions to the overall problem itself of homelessness and the different types. And yes, there are different types of homelessness. There are different reasons people become homeless. Yes, at the top of the list are drugs. Right underneath that is mental health. And right underneath that is we are a really cheap place to live. We have people that move out here thinking they're gonna get a job, thinking they're gonna find a place to live, and we are out of housing. We're out of housing that people can get into, that people can afford. When I moved up here, I was met with extreme animosity by the property management company that I was renting from. I was moving up here with a job, with a good-paying job. I even prepaid everything, and they were still hostile to me, treating me as if I was one of any of the other number of people that I had rented to. That's gotta stop. That is unacceptable. We are people. We are trying to live here and make this our community. The first word in the abbreviation of tassel is temporary. This is not a permanent solution by any means. This is not a solution. This is a temporary means to get this very sensitive part of our community a place where they can be and get services and get off, you know, get off the streets and hopefully get off with the drugs, get the help they need. I, I disagree with a couple of comments that were made earlier. You need to give these plain people a place that they can start to heal. And if you know that you have a place you can go to, that you can get out of the weather, that you can survive, that changes your feeling about yourself and your community a lot. And if that helps even a few people get on that path to recovery, I think we need to do whatever we can to do it. And that means setting up a temporary living space where these people can go. None of these properties are great. None of them are perfect. But, you know, until we can really sit down with the county who has the money and really come up with a true permanent solution, we have to do something temporary because anything else isn't needed.
Okay, Councilwoman Oskar?
Well, thank you. I'll offer a few opinions, and I have a question for Lisa as well, so... In a bit, but... One thing I'd like to, as a general question for our ad hoc committee, I don't know if we, if this committee, if we're as a city, if we looked hard at maybe another piece of property we could purchase for, for, for your, for the shelter. And I know it costs money to buy a property, but is it, it is an asset. It can be slated. What we spend on secure, it's in the real money, the big money we're spending is on property. It's on, it's on personnel cost to offer at the shelter. That's, that's what we're, we're, we're... So, anyway, I, I'll just say I'd like to open that thought or door. I don't think the committee is, or the staff are looking at for other offices that could purchase possibly for a location. But I, to me, that should be, I might say openly out of the game here, but I think our lives or years or something should be opened up, and maybe we should be trying to do that. You can know there's, there's no ideal location. You know, inaction is, is gonna have a reaction. So, if we close tassel, if there's, you know, which can be results in that. And people sort of camping in our downtown area, and I just think, personally, I think the alternatives are worse. I've gone up in Seattle area, Lundy area with my daughter's birthday and do some stuff and leaving her around. The only ones struggling with this issue. A question for Lisa, and specifically, and it kind of relates not necessarily to the Michigan Street property, but any other property, if, for a longer term, if we move there about zoning change. And so, my question is, with, in, I know we have temporary use permit like up to a year, and then permanent, or, you know, if we say that site was gonna go for a couple more, your, the power of a moment goes, it would require zoning change. Is that, would that process require going through a hearing examiner? For this zoning change?
No, just because it's brought out by City Council, you were requesting a hearing be done for the hearings examiner. But normally, when it comes through State Council, what they do is we grant it through an ordinance. So, we do the ordinance process, and we hold a hearing through council. So, you can definitely request that that go to be hearing the examiner for the hearing. But the ordinance would still be heard by City Council. Well, it, it is a challenge. We, we are on the conditional use. There really isn't anything in our comprehensive plan nor zoning code that addresses this particular issue. We're dealing with a comprehensive plan from 2001 that we are in the process of updating, as well as a zoning code from 1999. So, the first step is to update the comprehensive plan and then follow up with the zoning code. So, again, we're doing the comprehensive plan this year, and I, my hopes are that we can turn around and do the zoning code next year in '21 and deal with that, deal with this issue in that process. If we need to make changes prior to that, then definitely we can, but we're hoping that we can take it through this process. And the temporary use permit, you, the council has authorization to do that for up to a year. By waiting and going through that, we can actually identify in our zoning code or in our comprehensive plan areas where it could make sense for this use to happen and, and carry it through that process. But again, that, that's completely up to you, but it is a challenge because it's not something that we had actually addressed within our documents. You see other jurisdictions that have constantly going through updates, and they are under broken management, under law to, to update every, every so often. We don't have that requirement, so some of our documents just take a little bit longer.
Well, and kind of where I'm, I'm going with that question is, is if we set up the site somewhere else and it requires a zoning change or something like that, I would hate to see us do is put some investment at site and then have to move it again because a hearing examiner wouldn't allow that. And that's kind of the point of my question. I just wanna make, wherever if and where we move the camp to, that if we can stay there, I guess legally, and we not put investments there that, where that investment's thrown that money by, that's kind of the point I'm with that question. I, I gotta say, you know, I know on staff, on, everybody at some point or another applied for a position here, and I don't think I knew the information we got, gave to any staff applying for a job here that was dealing with homelessness on any information they got. So, it, it's been tough. It's ongoing tough, and I know the mayor mentioned it. I think the council appreciate the hard work and, and every staff has done and has to do in dealing with this issue. But it's, it's here, it's our town, and it's, it's our issue. We have to deal with that, and we appreciate all the, the work that's gone into it. The, so anyway, I think, personally, I just feel like closing the camp, the, the problem's not going to go away. And closing the camp's not gonna cause the problem to go away. I, I think the results would be worse. So, anyway, the other thing, I, I just gotta mention about the needle exchange. Two things, you know, that's not a decision we make. That's a county decision. I do believe if the county's gonna do it, they should do it in every area in the county, not just our town. But, you know, the scientific facts point out that it reduces the risk of people getting stuck by needles, and especially our residents' homes. You know, I, I totally get why people hate the program and don't think probably should do it, and there's compelling arguments for that, but, you know, it's life-altering for people if you get stuck by needles and tossed away, especially for the parish responders and so on. That's all I can say.
Well, I think that we saw what it was like before there was the camp in place. Dan, you alluded to what the city council meetings were like with similar people from the business community coming and talking about the impacts to their business in downtown because there wasn't a camp in place. So, I feel like at this point, with some of the legal implications that are present at this time, that there needs to be some sort of solution within Grace Harbor. And that's where I feel like as a one person on a council of twelve, that we have a huge weight on our shoulders that's been put on us. And there's other stakeholders that are present here that are not present here. And I feel like we need to engage those stakeholders, and it sounds like there have been conversations about support, but I feel like we're going in on our hands and knees begging for something when they should be at the table helping us come up with something. And I don't know the support that we've received from social services or where they're at in this and how they weighed in on what's working well at tassel and what isn't. But I would like to hear their thoughts and if they're coming into the camp and how frequently that is, and how they're able to engage with people, or if people are not willing to engage with them, or maybe there's fears from social services to engage with people in the environment that's there. I mean, there's just so many things that I don't know at this point, that I think it, it's, to me, I would recommend expanding the ad hoc committee to bring some more people to the table to sit down and be able to have those kinds of conversations. I think we owe it to our community to come up with a written plan and perform some of the due diligence and have an idea of, you know, what are our legal risks? What are health and safety risks where we have some of that understood at this point? But I think that there's more of that due diligence that needs to be performed. The Michigan Street property, I have a lot of concerns with it that might be alleviated through due diligence, but at this point, I don't feel comfortable moving people to that site without knowing more about that. Finally, I think in our budgetary consideration, we leave out a big figure here that's more, I think, a soft-dollar cost of what is it costing in personnel dollars to be managing that site? And all the hours that people are spending strictly on what's going on there. I think we, we leave that out, and when we're talking to the county about being our fifty-fifty partner, I'm sure that the, there's a big figure there, you know, that's closer to the security amount that we're paying in those soft-dollar personnel costs to, to keep the, that camp running right now.
Councilwoman Ross? So, I was really happy when they opened tassel because I really thought it was a step forward, and I still believe that strongly. My concern about the current site is I just don't think that it's quite large enough. And I don't mean bringing more people in. I mean spreading the tents out and then having a separate area for visitors. I think these people coming into the camp are really causing a lot of the problem, and if we could keep that separated, I think that would really help. I am not opposed to moving to Michigan Street. I know there's a lot of concerns about that, but I work across the street from the current site, and I do not see it as a problem. So, the neighbors that are so concerned, I think they should consider giving it a chance. But if we want to look at other alternatives, I'm open to that, too. I just feel that we need to do something. I agree totally. We need to have other people at the table. There shouldn't be just us. And I know that there's been some attempts at that, and we need to keep working at that because other people need to be involved. And I think some of the other cities in our county need to be involved because some of these people are coming from their cities, too. So, why shouldn't they be helping out? That's my opinion. Thank you. Yes?
I've been homeless. Slept on the river a few times. Not the Shaysliss, but at the, at the Wishka. So, honestly, I think we need a tassel. Other people have said it, it's not perfect, any of our sites, but I, I think the Michigan Street or on the south west end of the Shaysliss Bridge are about the best we have. I've come across a lot of abandoned encampments, dog reach syringes. I picked them up. I've never been put to the danger zones there. People, and a lot of the, the majority of the syringes that were picked up from the water ship last year were from an encampment. There was eighty-eight...